Call to order, the regular meeting of the Salem School Committee for September 3rd, 2024 at 7:00 PM. This meeting is taking place in person at 29 Highland Avenue, Room 227. You can also join the meeting via Zoom using the link posted in the agenda. First item of business is approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
We have members participating remotely, I believe. Are they on? There. Okay, so we have roll call vote. We'll start over here. Member Manning?
Yes.
Member Cruz?
Yes.
Member Cornell?
Yes.
Member Hoffman?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Miranda?
Yes.
And myself, yes. The agenda is approved. Public comment: The Salem School Committee would like to hear from the public on issues that affect the school district and are within the scope of the committee's responsibilities. Spanish interpretation is available for anyone who needs it. The members of the school committee would like to remind the public that Salem Public Schools students regularly attend school committee meetings. We encourage all meeting participants to model respectful and productive public discourse for our young learners. Any public comment online, in Zoom land, signed up? Any public comment in the room?
There's no pen up here.
That's right.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Pangalo, Doctors Reich, members of the school committee. It's a privilege to stand here tonight to reflect on the significant milestone we achieved through our recent negotiations. Negotiation is often described as an art, but I believe it's just as much a science and strategy. At its core, it's about understanding different perspectives, finding common ground, and working towards a shared goal. Last week, we marked the culmination of that process, a contract that represents not just an agreement, but a commitment to collaboration and mutual success. Negotiations can be complex and challenging. They require patience and creativity. Each party brings their own needs, concerns, and objectives to the table. Our task was to navigate these diverse interests, to listen actively, and to find solutions that are beneficial to all involved. We faced tough decisions and debated different approaches, but we did so with a shared goal in mind, to create an agreement that serves both our educators and our students, as well as our long-term goals for our district. It is a testament to the dedication and hard work of everyone involved that we have arrived at a contract that reflects our collective effort and vision. As we move forward, let this contract be more than just a document. Let it symbolize the spirit of cooperation and the promise of future endeavors. Let it remind us of the value of patience and the power of collaboration. And let it serve as a foundation upon which we will continue to build our community. In conclusion, I want to express my sincere gratitude to everyone who contributed to this successful negotiation process. With one last step to go, which is for the STU membership to ratify the MOU at our end, I am confident that this contract marks the beginning of a new chapter filled with opportunities and shared achievements. Thank you once again, and let's look forward to the exciting journey ahead.
Thank you. Any other public comment from the room? Seeing none. Our next item is approval of the consent agenda. This is the minutes of the school committee meeting of August 19th and the warrants of August 21st, August 28th, August 22nd, and August 29th, and approval of the Salem High School football overnight field trip to Brewer, Maine of September 13th. Member Manning?
I'd like to remove item C, three, whichever it is, the football.
Item three.
Yeah.
From the consent agenda.
Okay. So moved?
Motion to approve the consent agenda with item C?
Three.
Three, removed.
Okay.
Second.
All right, roll call vote. Member Cruz?
Yes.
Member Cornell?
Yes.
Member Hoffman?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Miranda?
Yes.
Member Manning?
Yes.
Myself, yes. The matter carries. Item three. Come on. Cam, any motion or discussion?
I'm not sure what you're asking me.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Salem High School football overnight trip.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I thought it would be done further in the agenda, sorry.
I think it would just move next.
Second.
All right, under discussion. Any questions? Member Manning?
Yeah, I just had a couple of questions. I have no issue with the Maine-Brewster trip, et cetera. I mean, there's a long history of Salem and Brewster and football. I guess I'm just, I guess because there is that long history, and neither of the cities have gone anywhere, I'm just wondering why this is such a late piece of information, since I think we have a policy saying a certain number of days or weeks or whatever that overnight trips, et cetera, need to be approved, and this one doesn't meet that. So I'm just curious, what prompted the delay?
Mayor, if I would, I had asked Athletic Director Christie to be here to answer any questions, given that it was late in the process, and so we acknowledge that it is late. So I don't know if, Mr. Christie, you want to come up to the podium here? And I don't know if the committee has specific questions, but I guess the first one is, can you just speak about why the decision was later to stay overnight?
Yeah, definitely. So, a couple of things with the Maine-Brewer game, you know, super excited about this opportunity. For anyone that does not know the history, Brewer, Maine, and Salem High actually share one, the mascot of the Witches, as well as a former Hall of Fame coach for each program. We actually, this is, we're calling it the Ken Perone-Witches Classic, as a way to kind of commemorate the history between the two programs. One of the reasons this request was put in a little late was due to the fact that because this is a game between two states, they have to be approved by the state's organization, and we were waiting for the state of Maine to approve it, in which that was approved in Maine in August, excuse me. Massachusetts had approved it earlier in the summer. And then secondly, was our coach wanted to have an actual roster. He didn't want to, you know, guestimate on who potentially would be participating in this field trip. So he wanted a real roster that he could share with our nursing staff and our school.
Okay, I guess I appreciate the history of the game. I won't get into the history of the Ken Perone, whatever, or the history of the Witches, whatever, but the game itself between the two cities has a long, remarkable history, and I do appreciate that. And I guess I understand, if Maine didn't get this approved, you know, I'm not sure why that would happen, but it happens, those things happen. I would just say that in the future, I don't think it's necessary to actually, I personally don't think, I would have needed to see the actual players. Actually, we don't see them, they're blacked out. But I don't need to know that, you know, so much as, obviously, the nurse does, but that could all have been taken care of well in advance, and probably was. So I guess the reason really is the delay at Maine, but it just, I was a little surprised since it's something that has happened over the years, over and over and over again, what the concern was. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, members?
Mayor, may I speak?
Yes. Member Miranda?
I just wanted, thank you. I just wanted to ask if it's possible, and I guess this is more of a question for the mayor or Member Cruz, but is it possible in the future for us to, like, provisionally accept something like this until the other answer comes down? Or is that something that we need to wait for?
Do provisionally accept it while we're waiting for, like, the state of Maine to do their process?
Yes, exactly.
I would imagine so.
Yeah.
Yeah, if we knew that the trip was coming up.
Yeah, we can conditionally approve it. So I think in the future, if this happens again, you could notify us in the summer once it's received approval on the Massachusetts side, and then we could take it up at one of our other summer meetings, even if you don't have the roster set. And again, it'd be conditional, so you don't have to tie it to a date. I think we're just really approving the field trip. So if it gets pushed back, you just notify the committee, and you don't really have the approval.
Yeah, can I just, I mean, I think it should just automatically be on the agenda annually, because it's an out-of-state trip, number one. So I'm not sure that it always has been. Even if you don't stay overnight, it is out-of-state. So I would just get in the habit of coming to us in the summer, as Mr. Cruz mentioned, and asking for the school committee's support, with the idea that, you know, either you're planning on staying overnight as well or not. So I think that could just be, you know, you put a reminder on your calendar that, I presume that this game is going to be played annually. Every other year will be, obviously, here and then verse there. So maybe two years from now, you put it on the calendar for the summer.
Definitely. I can definitely do that.
Member Manning?
I do have one more question. Because it is the out-of-state, and, you know, and there is a considerable hoopla about it, for lack of a better word, sometimes, do you know, are these all, these can't be all, how are the kids selected for this? Like, is this all of the senior juniors and sophomore players on the varsity team?
It is essentially all the students that are on the varsity roster.
Okay. Does essentially mean some didn't get to go? I guess that's my concern. If you're on the varsity and the varsity's going, are we taking everybody or the?
If they're on varsity, they are going overnight, yes.
Okay, all right. Just players?
Players, yes.
Not cheerleaders, not?
Cheerleaders are going up on Saturday, Saturday morning.
All right, okay. Is the band going?
The band is not.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any further questions? On the motion to approve the Salem High School football overnight field trip to Brewer, Maine on September 13th, roll call vote, Member Cornell?
Yes.
Member Hoffman?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Miranda?
Yes.
Member Manning?
Yes.
Member Cruz?
Yes.
Myself, yes, the matter carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Superintendent's report.
Good evening, Mayor, and welcome back to everybody. Tomorrow, we're in full swing here in the Salem Public Schools. Very excited to welcome everyone back. Before I do a couple of updates on back-to-school updates, I would, I'm gonna, we're gonna close the summer with a update on summer school, just a brief, some brief information about the summer school programming, and we're very happy to have Taylor McDonald, who's done an outstanding job of coordinating our summer programming. And Jen Dussetly is also here, I think she's over there, yep, and a lot of the summer programming is also extended-year programming for special education. So Taylor, if you want to come up, we'll queue up your presentation. Just want to give the committee a sense of what happened this summer, and successes, and perhaps some areas for consideration moving forward. And while we're waiting, I'm going to just thank everybody for an outstanding back-to-school event. It was awesome at Salt and Stall. I want to thank Laura Assad, who I think is online, and all our family engagement facilitators, the Salem Teachers Union, Salem Police, Salem Fire, City of Salem, countless organizations who put in, it gets better every year, and it was just such a, it's such a warm, special way to kick off the school year. So thank you to everyone that made that possible. My favorite was the hair cutting station. I wish I could partake, but the mayor and I have long, can no longer, we can't do those, we can't do those fancy cuts and, I don't know what they call, fades and all that stuff in our hair. You think I could do a fade? Okay, well, anyway.
You're doing one. It's happening.
Anyway, with that, Taylor, save me right now. You're on.
Keep on going. Well, thank you very much for inviting me to share some highlights from our summer programs. It was a busy summer. We had a lot going on in some of our schools. So just to ground us here, I'm just gonna do some big-picture highlights from the summer programs, and then take a little bit of time to dig into what all the students were doing at the different grade spans, and then, Jen, in partnership with myself, or we can share some of the extended-year highlights and some closing remarks. So Salem Public Schools' summer program. So we offered 12 summer programs, and in the 12 programs, we served 575 students. We had 150 staff, so in various capacities, some working a few hours and some a longer period of time for the full program time. We operated summer programs in five of our buildings, so our custodial staff has did a phenomenal job in preparing schools while also ensuring that our program's space was clean for our students. We partnered with over 35 community partners and community-based organizations to run our programs. We operated 1,000, over 1,300 program hours, so that's cumulatively, so among all our programs combined. The food service department served over 21,000 meals to all of our summer program students, which is phenomenal. The transportation department created and supported 14 routes. So also, thinking about our students who are experiencing homelessness, they supported getting them in and out of the city daily to attend their summer program. We went on over 20 field trips, and we had over 22 bus drivers and monitors supporting the transportation to and from the programs. Seven program nurses who worked to make sure that every program had a nurse covering it, so they did a great job picking up all of the program hours. And then lastly, our nine City Connects coordinators did a phenomenal job recruiting students for the rising first through rising eighth graders into our summer programs. So at the elementary level, we had two major programs. We had our ELSA program and our summer YMCA Summer Academy program. So the ELSA program is English Language Summer Academy. The program had over 160 program hours, averaged about 34 students daily, and the program focus was English language development and social-emotional learning. At the YMCA program, there was over 200, or 200 program hours. On average, we served about 100, just shy of 140 students, and then the focus was academics as well as social-emotional through some of the enrichments that the Y was able to provide in the afternoon. So the ELSA program, the program theme was the wonderful world of water. We had various partners. Students explored and learned all about the water cycle and took field trips to the different water sources within Salem. So we had Salem Sound Coast Watch come in. In one of the photos up here, you can see Ipswich Watershed. The students are learning all about the different water sources within Salem. Went to the Boston Aquarium, Museum of Science. Yeah, and at the end of the program, they had a great showcase where they were able to show off their skills. We invited families, it was a great event. The YMCA program, we offered our first dual-language summer program, which was phenomenal. The students got to explore storytelling, the components of a story, and characters as they learned about traditional folktales. The students developed their own stories and then presented them through puppets, through a puppet show. So the rising first and second graders took components of the traditional fables, like Red Riding Hood and Goldilocks and the Three Bears, and they crafted their own. And then the older kids were able to actually develop their own stories and then present them. Playful Learning, they, their overall project was engineering a bicycle-safe city, so they learned all about the different modes of transportation in a city, and then really digging into what bicycles are, the different parts, components, what goes into creating a safe city. We had the, some urban designers and civic engineers come in and talk about how a city supports the different modalities of transportation, and as the students were learning and developing their own bike-safe cities. And then we used the Connect science curriculum in our third, fourth, and fifth grade, and they were learning all about renewable energy sources. So they went on various field trips with Salem Sound Coast Watch. They learned about composting. They went to the Beverly High School and was able to really look at the solar farm that they have out there and learn all about the different ways we can continue to lean on the sustainable energy sources. And so at our middle school program, we partner with Leap for Education, and they run our large-scale program. This year, we had, like, phenomenal attendance at the middle school. There was over 90 kids a day. This highly engaging program, project-based learning. In the morning, students were able to participate in two of the project-based learning opportunities, and in the afternoon, they were able to rotate through some of the enrichments. Just to shout out the 2D game design, students were developing multi-level computer games, and it was pretty impressive. Playing them was challenging, but then also seeing them be able to discuss their design process and what it is that they did to actually create their programs. High school was also busy. We had our 21C internship program, and so that's supported through 21st Century. We had nine high school interns who worked in our elementary and middle school programs that were just shared. They were phenomenal. They did weekly meetings where they were able to build their own competencies as young adults who are interested in pursuing the field of education, as well as their career portfolio, resumes, cover letters. And then the last professional development we had with them, we brought in a panel of individuals such as the Salem Public Schools, Human Resource Department, the YMCA, some other community partners, just to talk about next steps to continue on the career path as they enter into their college careers. New Liberty Innovation School supported a summer program for their rising freshmen, and so the goal was to build a sense of community with the freshmen, as well as highlight some of the work-based learning competencies that they will have an opportunity to engage in later on in their career at New Liberty. Summer Connects had a similar model, where they supported the rising freshmen. The goal of the program is to jumpstart their high school career, both academically and socially. The students were able to obtain .5 credits. They worked on some of their mathematical ELA skills, and then they really built a sense of community for a group of about 20 rising freshmen. And then our NOT yet program in our Salem Prep High School, they focus on credit recovery, and over 90 students daily showed up and were able to obtain credits so that they can continue on into their, like, the grade level that they came into high school at. And then our extended-year programs were phenomenal. We had some amazing coordinators, and Jen, please step in if you have anything else to add. They partnered with the fire, the fire department, the police that came in, Salem Library, Inclusion Sports. We had some other great partners come in and work with students. At the elementary, they had weekly themes such as Shark Week. They piggybacked off the Olympics, and they had some great activities for students. At the elementary level, they served over 66 students on average, and then at the high school level, about 28 students. And just some highlights there, the touch-a-truck was so great with the fire department, they brought in the police department, and then they're just trying to bring in everyone so that they can have all the hands-on activities. Yeah, and so just in summary, it was a great summer. Most of the programs are funded through grants that we have secured for the upcoming school year, so they'll be funded for the next summer, summer 2025. But in thinking about continuing to have sustainable programming, thinking, like, the challenge is finding or continuing to apply for grants to support our secondary summer programs.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Member Cruz?
First, good to see you, Taylor. Thanks for being here. I think that was a really fantastic presentation and great to hear all the things that we had going on in the summer for our kids in the community. I had the chance to visit Expanded Horizons, and that's been around for so long, and it certainly was great to see the middle school students so deeply engaged, because we know that that's where we've had, I think, some struggles as a district over the recent years. The one question that I had was around the English Language Learner Summer Academy, ELSA. Could you talk about, and I may just have missed it when you mentioned it, how students qualify for that? Is that an examination of the access scores, or just where they're at in their language development, and then families get selected, or is that just something that was widely available to MLs?
Yeah, so the program was designed for our ML students, and so in collaboration with the City Connects team, the ML teachers identify a list of students or a group of students who are predominantly in, like, the access level ones and twos. So our newer comer or our beginning language-developing students, and they recruited that way, and then they, like, obviously, they continued to recruit until the program is full. We did run into some challenges, just because a lot of the families, at the time of recruitment, were unhoused in the Bates complex, and so then they moved to a different city. So just getting them into the program daily and making sure that they, attendance was consistent, but yeah, that's how we recruited. And it's just for rising first through rising fifth graders.
Understood. And then my second question is probably a question for the superintendent or for Ellen here regarding the funding for this particular program. Did we get any funding from Desi to be able to stand this up?
For the ML program?
For the ML program specifically.
Title III funds it.
Title III, okay.
And so, yeah, it's fully funded by Title III.
Great.
Yeah, and we partner in the afternoon with Campfire North Shore. So the morning is academics, and then they go to Campfire, and they engage in, like, swimming, STEM-based activities, cooking, so.
Thank you.
And the district provides the transportation to Campfire from?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's great. Yep, Member Cornell?
Thank you, Taylor. Even though I've heard, I hear this every year, going back, it's still so, it's so impressive, the kind of program that we have for students who really need to continue to be engaged both academically and socially and socially, social emotionally, and it's just one of the many things that makes me super proud of this district, that we're doing the work over the summer, you're doing the work over the summer, you know, to support all of our kids, again, particularly our kids who need it the most. So thank you, and it's incredibly impressive.
Thank you.
Before Taylor leaves the podium, I just want to give her a shout-out. When most of us on our staff either have the summer off or were able to take a week here or there, it's really high time for Taylor, and she's working, you know, the whole summer. So, you know, she just has brought such energy to this work, and I think, you know, as she explained, it is really a combination of fun and academics, so, you know, puppets and field trips and going to the coast, but there are academics, you know, woven and throughout that. So I really want to thank her for the energy that she's brought to this work, her commitment, and really the innovation. I think a really shining star was the internship program, which was really, you know, came out of her brain, and she, when I went and visited the programs and saw our students, you know, middle school, you know, boys holding little kids' hands, you know, by the hand and consoling them and bringing them, it really was, you know, heartwarming to see that and see them embedded in the program. And she didn't just leave it there. Some of these kids did not have plans for what they were gonna do next, and so engaged our HR program to do, like, a little career fair with them, and so I really think that speaks volumes around, you know, Taylor's just commitment to kids of all ages. I think she sells herself a little short. She is a grant-writing machine. These programs are not cheap. You can see we're hiring nurses and staff and transportation and the trips and so forth. And so it takes a lot of, you know, commitment to writing the grants, seeking them out. Salem has a good reputation, so we're grateful that we've been funded for these programs. But I do want to underscore that she's, some of the grants come and go and/or get cut back, and we are forecasting sort of a shortfall in our secondary programming, so I just want to tee that up for budget season, that we may need to access some operating budget funds for that. But thank you, Taylor, for, you know, really expanding the programs and your great work.
That was a secret, that I was a grant writer. I didn't know what people did. Not my favorite.
You'll be getting calls. Thank you. All right.
All right, thank you, Taylor. You can see her dance moves in the back-to-school video, too. You can compare her moves to the mayor and my moves.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know. Let's just leave it at that.
On a roll today.
Let's just keep going.
All right. So just.
Did you see it?
Yeah. So you can put the second presentation up. I just have some back-to-school updates that I want to inform the committee on as we approach the start of school tomorrow. For the majority of kids, remember Carlton's been in full swing for the last few days. And there are kindergarten students come tomorrow. Everybody else comes tomorrow across the district except our kindergarten and pre-K students in our other buildings. So, and they start on Monday. So if you could go to the next slide, just wanted, we had a great convocation highlighted by I'll Never Hear the End of It, Collins winning the back to, the, the trophy for the Battle of the Schools. And it was lively. A highlight was having the Fly Kids there, some of our students dancing. And our focus has been on, is on the, is, continues to be on how are the children and making sure our focus is squarely on the needs of young people as we start the school year. And then the back-to-school fair, as I mentioned before, this is our awesome FEF team. And if you get a chance, please thank them for their, you know, thank them for their work for an amazing back-to-school festival. And thank you to everybody in this room that played a part in that and to Laura online. I think she's there. So next slide. So this is, believe it or not, this is my last slide. I just have a few updates that I wanted to share with you on, to build off of what we shared last time. So Chromebooks, there was a concern about Chromebooks getting here on time. The good news is all the ninth-grade Chromebooks have arrived and they will be distributed to students on Thursday and Friday, which is fine because they have their, you know, orientation days and they'll be distributed to students. And I want to thank Mark and his team for doing quick work to turn those around and get them to students. The fourth and fifth graders are getting new Chromebooks. Those are arriving next week. They were shipped, I think, today, Mark?
Tomorrow.
Oh, tomorrow, which is again, the first week of school, we're not jumping on devices, you know, nor should we. And so they will be in classrooms, the, the kids don't get to take them home in fourth and fifth grade, but they will be in classrooms next week. So thank you to Mark's team for trying to hustle this along because they're still, you know, we still experience back ordering on things like that. Yonder Pouches were also on back order, but they have arrived. And Yonder will be used again at all the same schools that, as last year. Collins Middle School will use Yonder, Salt and Stall will use the pouches, New Liberty will use them and Salem High School. Generally, we had more success at the middle school level last year and New Liberty had success using pouches. So their policies won't change significantly. Salem High School will no longer allow students to take their phones out of the pouches during lunchtime, which was part of the challenge. And so they have some new practices in place. I would say that it was not as successful at the high school for many, you know, many reasons. And you can all imagine what those are with older students who are more attached to their phones. We try not to, you know, I, I think we're, we're not being as, I think the school is monitoring, but more importantly, we just want to make sure the phones are off and away. And students who need to use the pouches will, as long as the year goes on, will have specific plans to help them with the pouches. Did you have a question about that?
It's more of a comment, which is that some of us with incoming freshmen might have needed this information sooner to prepare the freshmen for the fact that they wouldn't be having their phone at lunch. That's just for future.
That's, that's.
Not me, but other, other members.
That's good feedback. Other, other members of your family maybe. So, but the pouches are in. We were worried that we wouldn't have them on day one and schools will be rolling that out. I just want to call out the reading challenge. We're going to remind people to bring in their reading logs for the first two weeks of school. The winners get a, a ride to school with Derby, who is very popular, to school. So that will be happening. We appreciate the Salem Police Department's support of that and will be doing that. Will be, one, there'll be one winner in every school. Transportation, I don't like to say too much about transportation on the, but I feel as good as we've ever felt because it's in Vanessa's hands. She's doing a lot of, she's done the routing. This is her second year doing that. And we have worked really hard, she, not we, I haven't been part of it, but Vanessa's done an outstanding job of notifying parents. I don't think I've gotten one call from a parent, believe it or not, about transportation because everything has been clearly distributed. The questions get answered by the department. There will be delays and I want to remind everybody, it's going to be slow moving. There's going to be a lot more traffic on the roads tomorrow. There are new routes. It always is the case. Salem Police will be out in full force to help us with some of the sticky spots, which are Salem High School. Actually, I think every school's a sticky spot in Salem when it comes to traffic and back to school. But it, it will work itself out. We, we are asking parents not to call immediately if their child's five or 10 minutes late, but to wait till it's longer than that. And we have extra people ready to take calls in multiple languages tomorrow to answer concerns. We ask them to call dispatch and RRT. If they don't get somebody, they can call our transportation. And we have the app, which is rolling out, has already rolled out and we've gotten some good feedback from parents already about the bus tracking app. The system for kids swiping on and off, the cards are coming in next week. And we don't really check bus passes at the beginning of the school year because we don't want to slow things down. But eventually, every student will need to swipe on and off of the buses with their individual identification cards, which will allow us to know whether a child gets on the bus, gets off the bus. Parents will, you know, will be able to give them good, much better information. And for us, it'll give us a better sense of ridership on the buses. I don't know if you want to add anything to that, Elizabeth? Okay. I, I also want to note enrollment. Our enrollment continues to grow. I'm more confident by the day that this number is more accurate, although there are always students that don't show up. We're 50 more students than we were just two weeks ago when I reported. So we're, our enrollment for today is 3856 and it was 3825 just two weeks ago. Hopefully that number holds or close to it because last year, our October 1 enrollment was 3811. So depends on how many kids show up. We still have students enrolling every day. I know we enroll at least half a dozen more students today and that will continue throughout the start of school. And so we are hopeful that that number will stay close to that. The building preparations, I do want to thank our custodians. We have a great crew. They have worked incredibly hard. And buildings that had summer school to speak to the summer school, we had multiple buildings that, you know, didn't, summer school ended three weeks ago and they had to do the majority of the building. I'm really appreciative of Zee and his team and every one of our custodians. Please shout them out as you see them. It's not easy work and we're fortunate to have a good crew. The buildings seem to be in very good shape. Air conditioning units are temperamental. Hopefully it is not as hot as, I was looking back at my emails from last year, we had a hot spell last year. And so we're hopeful, although we've done some work on our AC units over the summer and we, we are ready to, to roll. I mean, teachers are obviously in classrooms, you know, setting things up and throwing things out. So we're, we're moving as fast as we can to keep up with teachers who we very happy are throwing out things from their rooms. But it, I'm sure their custodians throwing things in the dumpster as we, as we speak. So appreciative of that. I did want to just talk about staffing and Jill's going to give, in your packet, which was added later, is the personnel report, Manny, that you like to ask for at the beginning or quarterly. So that's in the packet now. I'm going to have Jill just speak to it for a second. I do want to just point out, we do have some vacancies that I wanted to, to point out. We have three classroom teacher vacancies. We have a TSP teacher here at Collins that's a vacancy. Most of these are late resignations of people. We have a biology teacher at Salem High, which is the position I'm probably most concerned about finding. That came from a late resignation, a biology position. We have not had a lot of success. And then Collins has an additional teacher, humanities teacher, but it's more for swing. We are, I should have said this earlier, we are watching enrollment carefully in the middle school. The numbers seem to be higher than what we anticipated, but Mr. Softik has been waiting to monitor that and we have, you know, he just posted for a humanities teacher to provide support in the sixth grade in particular, which actually has been our lowest performing grade in the district. So that position, we're not so worried about. The biology position at Salem High is one, if anybody has any leads, that is one we are concerned about. We have three paraprofessional openings, but we've made progress. Those have, those are positions that have come open more recently. So principals have not reported as many challenges hiring, hiring for paras as we've had in previous years. And then we have two building sub positions as well that we're looking to hire. So that's where we stand right now. There's also, I'm sorry, there's also a French teacher at Salem High School, but they have the long-term substitute ready to start. And each of these, each of these openings will have a plan in place to support students upon, you know, upon the start of school. So we're not worried about students not having a teacher in front of them on day one. We'll be ready for that. But like I said, the biology teacher is one that we're actively looking for somebody to, to fill. That's not an easy position to have to fill in August. I wish we would have known about it earlier in the summer. So with that, that, Jill, I'm going to turn it over to you just on the personnel report, which you should have in your packet. Jill, you there?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Got you. Yep, go ahead, Jill.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. So looking at the personnel report, I'm just very happy to share than we have been for sure over the last two previous school years. And what you see here sort of with these numbers is, I would say, overall, an increased story of increased stability in our, in terms of staffing. While we did have a fair number of new hires, about 86 overall, as well as exits, it's still far less than what we had the last previous two years. Taking a look at the teacher column, the first table lists out the schools and then the table below lists out district-wide positions. So taking a look at the teacher column, the first column in each category is the new hires. So we had about 50 to teacher new hires and you can look at the rows and see which schools. And if you wanted to compare that to last year, we had more like 70, almost 80, and then 88 new teacher hires the year before. And then similarly for the paras, we had about half as many new hires in terms of paras, meaning more have been staying in the position, which is great as we've had in the last previous years. And it's a similar story on down the line in terms of administration and so forth. I can also comment that the hires that, the candidates who came to us and that we hired seemed to be more qualified and had, more were licensed. So we have fewer that will be unlicensed and requiring waivers and that sort of thing. And even among those that are requiring waivers, more of them had a plan already in place or are working on a plan. So that will, will have much more success with them. So I'm happy to share any questions that you have. I believe I'll be doing a more, a deeper dive on staffing later in early, maybe early December or something like that, once we have all the numbers related to retention and things like that that we can look at.
Member Cruz.
Thank you, Mayor, and certainly appreciate the compliance with the, the policy around the personnel reports. I think it's important for us to kind of get an understanding, especially this one in particular as we're coming into the year, about how we're doing and just thrilled to hear that it sounds like we've been able to retain more folks over the summer. And so I think, Dr. Conrad, my follow-up question is more so about that subsequent report that you'll provide at a, at the deep dive. If you could just also just come with the data on the emergency licensure, how many folks still have emergency licenses and waivers? I know that the board extended it, but it would just be good to have a sense of how Salem's numbers are looking compared with the rest of the state. And then how, also would be great to hear how we're supporting folks with respect to any of the prep so that they can get their licensure. So that, that would be just the one data request that I would have. If we can see that visually, I think that that would be super helpful.
Absolutely.
Jill, we also probably should, along that question, Manny, there is, there's a satellite office of DESI licensure that's now out of Salem State that is going to support staff who are on waivers, staff that have emergency licenses, licenses and anybody who has questions about licensure. So we, we're working very closely with them and they're, the nice thing is it's in our backyard and it's a regional center for supporting staff with licensure issues so they don't have to deal with going to the department or contacting the department. They can work directly with, what's the office called, Jill?
They have so many acronyms over there.
An acronym of some kind?
It's the Licensing Center CELCS, C-E-L-C-S. But I will just say, we've, we had an initial meeting and training just last week and it's great to not feel so alone in this licensure journey because it is a complicated thing for many people. And so I think we will be able to provide a good deal of support to just about everyone who's looking to get licensed.
Thank you for that. That, that's great to hear that it's really close to home at, at the university so that we can create that access for those employees. And I think the only other thing that I would just mention, and I know Superintendent Reick, you've been really engaged with me on the educator diversity bill that we've been working on. I'm hopeful that economic development bill will get done this fall. We're seeing a lot of movement in the legislature on different bills. So hopefully that will provide some relief to folks with the licensure, concerns around MTL and some of the testing requirements. So stay tuned, but I'm, I'm hopeful that the two reports can get paired up. So, you know, if that's coming in October to us, hopefully I can provide an update to the committee on what's actually happening on the state side with respect to teacher licensure and some of the expected relief.
Member Manning?
I had a couple of questions, both on substitutes. First, where would I be looking to see, like where would they be included, the building subs? Are they on the top chart or?
They would be in the PSRP column of the schools.
Okay.
Chart. So yeah, some number of those new hires and exited are building substitutes. I guess I could bring that information more specifically about building subs. It's all the PSRP, which is the paraprofessional and school-related personnel.
Okay. That's all right. I just wanted, and so do we have a building sub for every school right now? Are we set for that?
Yes.
Well, not, not all have been hired. I mean, there's one that's vacant.
There is one vacant.
Salt and Stall's vacant.
Okay. Right.
Anyone needs a job.
And my other question is on the daily substitute teachers. I mean, do you know, Jill, roughly how many actual people, like 13 people exiting, but what's that out of? Because sometimes.
Yeah. We hired up, close to 60. We had close to 60 daily subs in our pool this past year and not, I, I want to say they're, meaning they're signed up to receive calls to possibly substitute. Out of that 60, not all of them actually accept positions. So every year in the summertime, we try to reach out to those daily subs and find out, do they still, you know, are you still wanting to, to do this? And so we had, we just did that. So we just purged 13. So we're trying to hire in more now for the year.
But was, but some of them are still under the situation of like, like I'll do Tuesdays and Thursdays, that kind of thing.
That's exactly right. So not all of them are open to subbing district-wide. Sometimes they just want to.
Different levels, but they also can just identify days. So 13 exiting, I mean, it looks like, you know, this herd.
Those are primarily the 13 who told us that they did not want to be on the list anymore for this year.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you.
Just, I'm almost done on my update. I just wanted to give, I thought the committee would be interested in the number of, of the students who are migrants at Harrison Road, where we stand with those students right now and how many are still in the system. And so this, this is data as of last week. We had 81 students who were housed at 20 Harrison Road, which is the Bates Complex last school year. Six students have received housing after leaving Harrison Road, we believe. 14, six students in Salem have received housing. 14 students were placed in shelters in Salem. 54 students were placed in shelters outside of Salem, 54 outside of Salem after Harrison Rose closed, in Lynn, Haverhill, Beverly, Lawrence and Brockton. Seven students withdrew during the school year, the end of the, the school year last year and left, and left the district. 62 out of the 81 students remained enrolled in the Salem Public Schools for the 24, 25 school year. That's a lot of students still with us, but many of them are not necess, they're not living in Salem. They're living in neighboring communities and being bused here daily.
So of those 54 students, are they all enrolled in Salem still?
Those 54 are still enrolled in Salem, yes. Right. I believe that's right. 54 were placed in shelters outside of Salem, yes. So we still have 62 out of the 81 still connected to us in some, in some way. So I just wanted to give, and that, that is not inclusive of all the other unhoused students that we have that are living in scattered sites, and that number does continue to grow. Jody would say it's higher, Jody Conley, who's our homeless liaison, would say that it's still, every year is higher than the year before. So I don't think we're going to continue, we may not have a site here in Salem, but we will continue to have many students coming through who are migrants potentially or are students who have just lived in Massachusetts and are unhoused. The challenge is we don't get the resources anymore from the state. When you have a site, a full site, you get resources for those students. We will no longer get resources for any students and they'll be treated just like, you know, homeless students, which are, is one of those unfunded, not fully funded by the state of Massachusetts when you have a more transient population, transportation, any services that may be needed for those students. So just wanted to make sure you all had that information. The last thing I just shared is I want to end on some highlights for this school year. We're really excited about some of the bullets that are on the right. We have leadership stability for the first time in a long time. Every principal is returning from the school and in the same exact school that they were in at the end of last year. That's very exciting. Honestly, I don't think people realize the significance of, this is the first year, at least since I've been here, that we're not training someone up to understand how the system works. And it's true also about the executive team. We've had turnover on the executive team every year since I've been here for one reason or the other, and now we have the same group of people coming back. So that's an important highlight, and that does matter for kids, just like Jill was saying, when we have stability of teachers, that really matters for, for children. Our dual-language program continues to expand. As you know, we're very excited about our pre-K dual-language program, our classroom, and then the expansion to fourth grade. And we are actively planning for dual-language to move into the middle grades as well. And Kim Talbott and her team, or Dr. T and her team are leading that. Obviously, all the bus, all the bus innovations and apps and I can't follow them all, but Vanessa created a video too, which we'll be sending out to families tonight that gives families, you know, an understanding of all these new bells and whistles related to making sure we don't lose children and we know exactly where they all are at all times. The witchcraft playground is very exciting that we're opening, you know, a state-of-the-art accessible playground in the school where we have the most, highest percentage of students with disabilities, you know, to have access to a state-of-the-art playground. That will open the beginning of October at some point. We don't have a ribbon-cutting date, but you will all be invited to that event. We don't have a date yet, right, Elizabeth?
There must be a plan.
Okay. The middle school learning pilot is now not really a pilot anymore. It's all throughout the entire eighth grade. You will hear more about the eighth grade experience at next, at the next school committee meeting. We're going to talk about some of the data from the pilot, but also really looking forward about what does that actually mean for students in this upcoming school year. With Mark's team, the digital media specialist role is new in schools. And as we, you know, look to, you know, introduce AI in our work meaningfully, thoughtfully, having folks who can support the responsible and ethical use of technology is exciting. We have new curriculum materials, not an overwhelming number of new curriculum materials, but we have some science materials, dual-language, obviously materials for pre-K. And trying to, what else did I forget, Kate? Curriculum materials.
Science, pre-K.
Yeah, not, not, we're not, you know, layering on another set of curriculum, but just in places where we feel like we have, where we didn't, teachers didn't have access to updated materials. And then finally, we're very excited to learn from Salem High School and the use of a new student and parent grade book. It is a, well, it's a pilot, except that everybody's going to be using it at the high school, but we hope to learn about its effectiveness, hopefully, hopefully its effectiveness, so that we could potentially use something similar across other schools in the future. So those are just some of the things we're looking forward to for the upcoming school year. And as I always encourage school committee members, I welcome you to come to schools, visit classrooms, and see the magical stuff that's happening across our school, and it all begins tomorrow. So with that, Mayor, turn it back to you.
All right, thank you very much. A lot on the transportation front, we are working with Bus Patrol for stop-arm cameras. So for those who are members of the community that might be watching this, don't go around the buses. We'll get you. Finance and operations, oh, Member Manning.
Yeah, I just, I'll check in on how we're doing on crossing guards.
Yes, so I have been in touch with Lieutenant Tucker in the last week. The Salem Police have done a great job of owning that space. They were still looking for people. I think they're short a couple of guards, and they were hoping to add in a couple of places. I can get you a full update on that, but the police have been very responsive in owning that work. They provided all the training, which I think they should because they know a whole lot more about than we do. But they were still struggling, and so I wonder, maybe we can help advertise those roles for people. But I'll, would you like me to get you an update on that?
I would. And I'm wondering, just like the openings that we do have, are they, are they places where we really need to consider having a cruiser there or, you know, I mean, do we have any place that there's no guard?
I think it's more that there's new places that they, that were requested, that they, that they wanted to add and they could not find additional folks.
Okay.
But I do know that they are planning to have people, cruisers all over tomorrow to assist with back-to-school.
Right, yeah, they're real good about that.
Yeah, and I said, we did, I did send them a list of our pain points, but again, that could be every school essentially with traffic, but there's obvious ones that are, Horseman in Salem High is a very tricky one, Salt and Stall. There's been a lot of concerns about the Salt and Stall pickup, drop-off. I think I forwarded to you, to all of you, the chief is meeting with a parent to look at one of the side streets. And then I know a member, Hoffman, has been very concerned about the crosswalk at, on Lafayette Street where people don't seem to stop. I don't know if you want to say anything about that, but that's something that we're, we are watching carefully and there's been, obviously, there've been a number of accidents over there and we just worry about kids crossing.
They have a flashing light too. That should help slow people down.
That's right. So.
So we're covered for every place for tomorrow, is what you're saying?
As far as I know.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Is there a finance and operations report?
I just have two updates. One is at the last meeting, Member Miranda asked about the age of the buses that were voted to be disposed of, and I emailed that too on Friday. But Vanessa has reminded me that typically we don't use buses that are over seven years old, and these buses range and age from being nine to, eight to nine years old. So, excuse me, eight to 11 years old. So if there are any other questions, I'm happy to take those. But the only other update that I had was actually an update on the high school building project as part of the finance and operations report.
I can take. So the update that we have is that we have, we're in the designer selection process. So we have eight firms that have submitted proposals. They submitted proposals by August 28th. The designer selection subcommittee reviews the proposals on September 5th. Applications review, the MSBA are on September 24th to determine the shortlist of three to four firms, and that will probably include the mayor, the superintendent, and myself. And the next school building committee meeting is on September 19th. And if people are more interested in further details, you can watch all of the videos online, and there's a pretty comprehensive web space for people to check out everything that is formally organized and overseen by Lisa, thank goodness, Lisa Golden, because she is incredibly organized and keeps us all on track.
Just to add to that, we did have a meeting, I think it was, I believe it was Friday, Lisa, with the project manager to talk about writing the educational plan for the project as well. That requires a small internal team of educators to be involved, which Lisa will be a part of. There'll be representation from the high school. And then I was going to talk to Dr. Talbott about making sure that somebody from our academic team is involved. Just every school has to submit an educational plan that has to be approved by the department, which really talks about educational vision and what your philosophy is for the school system. We're also going to want teachers to weigh in on it, but I want to make sure we don't waste people's time if, depending on, because we have a lot of language already to borrow from our accreditation and so forth. So that is a, the designer will help us with that, but the project manager wanted us to get a head start in identifying folks to help us with that plan.
And we had sort of a preliminary conversation about some of the, you know, our educational philosophy in the last meeting, and I think that the project managers were sort of pleased by the fact that we're a little farther ahead than some teams are in this, in this stage because, because we're so aligned and we're kind of all speaking the same language all the time. So I feel pretty confident that this is not going to be super heavy lifting from the district's perspective.
Member Manning.
Yeah, could, could you just, because some of the terms that people are going to be hearing through this process are, you know, not their, their terms based like in the industry. So just for tonight, can you just quickly, or maybe Elizabeth or Lisa, somebody, what, like a design team, you know, what's the term that you're talking about so that folks don't confuse that with an architect, because then we're talking about having an architect, et cetera, et cetera.
It is the architect.
That, so that is the architect you think you're talking, okay. All right, I want to.
And so they're, they drop the plans and then, so that's separate from the building team.
Right, right, but it's, so you are interchangeably using designer and architect.
That's how architects speak.
Sorry?
That's how architects speak.
Okay, I'm just, I just want to be clear, I want to be clear and I want the public to be clear.
We have a lot of really wonderful architects from the community on our, on our committee. We are so fortunate. So they've really brought us all up to speed, I think.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Anything else?
That concludes my comments.
All right. Thank you. We don't have a student representative of this report. Hopefully we'll have a student representative in the next couple of meetings.
Now that school starts, I'll reach out to my advisory group and we'll have a representative selected.
All right. Subcommittee reports. Member Cruz.
Thank you, Mayor. So on behalf of Salem School Committee, I'm delighted to share with members of the public that we have reached a tentative agreement with our partners at the Salem Teachers Union for a contract for three years. And I just wanted to, on behalf of the committee, just express my gratitude first to our partners at the Salem Teachers Union for, I think, their dedication and the conversations that we were having at the table, which you heard a little bit about at the beginning of the meeting, but I'll just say from my perspective as the chair, the professionalism, the openness to conversation, the willingness to collaborate and to really ground ourselves in our values as a district, I think was really important. And at the onset of the conversations, I think we saw that mutual respect across the table. We are colleagues working towards one aim, which is making sure that our educators have what they need so that they can serve our students and our community. And I think we talked at the beginning of negotiations about these being model negotiations, which I felt the last round of negotiations were, and I think that these ones were as well. I think they exemplified our commitment to our larger community, but certainly the public servants who do the work every single day of educating our children. So I couldn't be more proud of the work that happened at the table. And, and I want to thank my, my partner and President Berman, Vice President Tucker, and the executive leadership team of the union for, I think, being really good thought partners with respect to the process and making sure that we were really efficient in the 12 sessions that we had. And now I want to just turn my thanks to my colleagues on the school committee and the district leadership team. So Member Manning, Member Cornell, Mayor Pangalo, the superintendent, Assistant Superintendent Carbone, and Assistant Superintendent Polly, and then the members of the leadership team who joined us over the course of negotiations and our building principles. I think we engaged on many different levels, and it was really, I think, impactful to be able to see the partnership across the district to make sure that we got to a result that would be best for our community. So by way of process, I think what's left for the rest of the committee, we will also need to ratify the contract. So we're going to be setting up an executive session prior to the next school committee meeting to discuss the contract, so folks will be able to ask their questions in exec session. You will get the contract in advance. Right now, there's some cleanup that's happening between our council and the STU's representative. And so as soon as we get that in your hands, I ask members of the committee to proceed with just doing that review, coming prepared with your questions to that executive session, and then we'll move to the regular school committee meeting where we'll actually have to take a formal vote on the contract and then provide signature. So I would ask if folks, to the extent that you can, please do be here in person for that, that school committee meeting so that we can make sure that we get that signed and get the copies over to our partners at the Salem Teachers Union. And to the members of our community that we're following all along, I just, I want to thank you all as well for, I think, being engaged and certainly for reaching out. This is a different format, and I do think that it was one that, again, was rooted in our values as a community. And it's just really exciting to think that we're tackling a lot of the systemic issues that we know have held our educators back in some ways from being retained in this district. So, you know, whether we're talking about the compensation philosophy and actually tackling the table that we heard at the tape, the salary table and the inequities that that presented for some of our teachers, addressing parental leave. We know that the state passed a policy but left municipalities out, so this contract was our opportunity to rectify that, being able to talk about things that we knew were super important to members of our community, like a consistent school day across levels, extended recess and lunch, and then additionally prep time, something that we heard really, I think, impactfully from our educators, the importance of prep time for their professional practice. And there were so many other things that we took up in the contract. I'll provide a more substantive overview once we have committee members fully briefed at the next meeting. But again, just want to thank members of the public, my colleagues on the committee, the Salem Teachers Union, and looking forward to the next steps in the process.
Other committee reports, subcommittee reports. Paulsey.
I'll make a motion to approve Policies 2202 and 2500 for a third read.
Second. Under discussion? Seeing none. On the motion to approve, Member Hoffman. Member Campbell.
Yes.
Member Miranda.
Yes.
Member Manning.
I'm sorry, yes, I couldn't hit the mute button fast enough.
Pull it together. Member Manning.
Yes.
Member Cruz.
Yes.
Member Cornell.
Yes.
And myself, yes. No matter carries. Any other subcommittee reports? Any announcements, school committee announcements?
I have, I have one.
Manning.
Yeah, I just want to announce that one of our Salem Public School alumni, Nate Bertoni of the high school class of 2012, I see folks shaking, shaking their heads already, who was outstanding in the drama field, the world of drama, both at the middle school level and at the high school level, here at Collins and then at the high school, went on to, to really have his career in the theater, you know, slash literary world. And one of the things Nate has done is to write a children's book called Nana Nana, which is his effort to help children understand Alzheimer's disease. And in a couple of weeks, on September 17th, at the Beverly Music Theater, there's going to be a launch for that book. Tickets are $20, can be purchased at the North Shore Music Theater website. The ticket includes a copy of the book. There'll be a reception in the lobby at 6:00, followed by a performance by country music singers, Jay Allen. And after the performance, Nate and Mr. Allen and representatives from the Alzheimer's Association and Hilarity for Charity, for Clarity, I'm sorry, Hilarity for Clarity will engage in a discussion. So, and Nate will also be on hand if you'd like your book signed in the lobby. But, you know, I remember him as a very involved, you know, thoughtful student. I'm sure that this particular book, he's done several things, but I'm sure this book is well worth having if you, you know, if you're in any kind of situation. And I'm hoping we can get some folks over there, you know, from the Salem, Salem schools and from Salem in general for what looks like an enjoyable evening and also to support that cause for him. So I think there'll be some announcements coming out through the school system at some point soon anyway. But thank you.
If there's nothing else, I wish everyone a very happy back-to-school. Best wishes to all of our school community members and a great start to the school year. And with that, another motion.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
Under discussion, seeing none, roll call vote. Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Miranda?
Yes.
Member Manning?
Yes.
Member Cruz?
Yes.
Member Cornell?
Yes.
Member Hoffman?
Yes.
And myself, yes, we are adjourned.